All to order. The City of Ocean Shores Library Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, May 10, 2020. Approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes? deletions.
I hope we approve the agenda second in favor.
Our agenda is approved. Public communication. Sarah, do we have any?
I did not receive any written and there's no one on line.
I guess nobody's interested in our bylaws. Okay, approval of minutes for Library Board of Trustees, April 12, 2023.
No questions, say. I should just say that I sent the minutes to that she corrected them very nicely. Thank you for doing that. And then I sent her the same file back because I have the wrong code. So corrections are expected, including your name was spelled Denise and a number of others. But if you see any, please let me know.
The only thing that I really saw was under Old Business for Council Representation. And I think it maybe just be, well, Denise has got two N's in her name, right? Then you got a P after that. So I mean, I don't know if that was just a, you know, a setup and. It may have been second and spelled and then underneath that there's a P and I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, that is new phone buttons.
Yes, that's what I figured it probably was. Yeah.
Yeah, and also in the listing under Library Directors Report, Nico's name is misspelled. And then the 11th bullet, under my report Dungeons and Dragons should be put starting May 19. And under the 10th bullet, the chess set, if you could add purchased by friends of the library. And change May Day on the ninth bullet, May Day to was, is. Because it hadn't happened yet. And on the seventh bullet, change team meeting to team program. And on the second bullet, 75 meetings in March.
Okay.
I'll send you the correct file this morning.
That's okay. And then I will get it to Sarah to post.
Okay, and just one other, the last bullet, Citizens Academy, how do you spell that? Is it citizen apostrophe S or citizens?
I've been doing it with no S, no apostrophe.
There's no apostrophe, okay.
I do it with no apostrophe.
Yeah. Apostrophe, put it actually aside, we would not like that. Okay, do we have an approval for the minutes as amended?
So who?
Second. Full in favor.
Hi.
And thank you, Alex, for.
Thank you, as always.
Yeah. Yeah. What's happening?
Not much.
A lot. A lot, even more so than usual.
In statistics, I just want to apply your attention to the total circ for 2023 was 5,991. The highest it's been for a long, long time. And compared to 22, which was 4,600. And the others go backwards too. So we have been really, really busy. The other thing I wanted to call your attention to is under door count and a couple other lines, you'll see NA. Our door count quit working the middle of April. And IT, I've sent them about five requests and they have not responded to get it fixed. So I don't have door counts for April and so far none for May. So hopefully they'll get around to getting it fixed.
Keith, how old is the?
The work in the remodel. What happened is one of the IT people adjusted something on the thin clients, which are the public computers. And it messed up a whole bunch of things. It messed up everybody's printing. And a whole, whole host of things. It's like 10 things have gone wrong since they did that. And this is just one of them. And then yesterday we found another thing with printing that is part of the whole scenario. So anyway, so hopefully that will get resolved. And then are there any questions from the staffs before I go into programs? Okay, good. We have been really busy. I think, what did we have? 80, 80 in the meeting room? It's just really becoming phenomenal how much this room is being used. Okay, for programs, I put out some of the flyers were really, as I said last month, stepping it up big time. May has Mount St. Helens, which is next week. We have book group. We have computer class. We did a Libby drop-in day and we had about five people show. Think of DeMio, we had 11 kids plus parents. It was really fun. Went over really well. The one little guy says, are you going to do this next week? Nick is really excited and starts Dungeons and Dragons. And the city administrator Scott was in yesterday and he's going to attend that because he's an avid player. So we're really excited about that. Storytime is going phenomenal. Yoda Origami is the kids extravaganza program at the end of the month. The Tab met, she had, what, she had 10, 11 kids. And the teen zones, we had 19 and I was here. It was a Monday. You wouldn't even know that they were in the building, teenager. Just because they have, she has it set up in here and chess back there and all sorts of stuff. So. So that's June or May. And then I wanted to give, oh, we have people coming in for chess that aren't actually playing on it. And the friends are toying with the idea of getting us a table back there that has a chess board built into it. So we're thinking about that. And then the DVD. Display of the month is Meryl Streep. And I want to talk about June, so I'm not going to go through those questions. If you want to listen to me on the radio tomorrow, you can. So June, we've got that all put together. It's going to be published on Friday. We have the Friends of the Library Book Sale, which is the, they call the Big Bang Book Sale. And then we're having the Garden by the Sea and the Master Gardeners are going to do Gardening 101. Plus deer resistant plants. How to choose or pick plants that the deer won't eat. That's going to be June 10th at noon.
And when's the book sale?
The book sale is June 2nd and 3rd. And members from two to three on the second and then the general public from three to four. And then all day on the Saturday, the third. And I have the flyers there if you want. Art in the Library is our wonderful Alex for June. Oh, yeah. Twin Star is going to be doing a how to purchase a home seminar for us. Nick will do another computer class. And then we had our, kind of our kickoff for all our programming with the May Day for the kids. And then Sheila Roberts last week and we had 60 people. This room was packed. So we have another author coming. It's Brian Johnston from town. And it's his book called Deep in the Woods. And it's about the wirehouse or killings, kidnappers. And then in June, we have chess. Nico is launching for the summer a children's art sparks. And this is where kids can come and explore the basics of watercolor and create abstract animal art. And he's calling it Art Spark, to be funny. And of course, we have the teens and we have story time. But the big thing in June is we're going to be kicking off the summer reading program for all ages. And we have. A flyer for the kid or the adult programs. This is the cover. The theme is Find Your Voice. And this is all adult for the June, May and August. First time we've ever had that many adult programs. And it's, it's everything from flowers to whale songs to flying a drone to learning how to play the ukulele. To learning how to weed your garden and so on and so on and so on. Including the ones that the Friends of the Library are supporting, which is a watermelon fee and a hot dog fee. And that's going to be in the summer. So June kickoff with the friends is June 16th from one to four. And it is going to be sign up for children's, teens and adult programs. Have free ice cream Sundays. And then at 2 o'clock will be Jeff Evans, who's the children's programmer magician that is fabulous. But it's really for all ages. And then at 3 o'clock on that day is Harvest Moon, a Quinnell Indian storyteller. And she's also for all ages and is fabulous. So that kicks off and we did a really, Michelle, she loves to inquire. We did a really nice kickoff. This has Jeff on it and Harvest Moon. And then sign up for all three programs and enjoy ice cream. And then Nico put together a really nice book for the kids to use when they read. And we received $3,000 from Save the Children. For this children's programs. And basically when they read books, they color in the animal and all the animals that he used, find their voice. And then they get a toy out of that and they're really cool toys. And then Michelle is having reprograms. This is spur flyer. And she's having the Ice Cream Social, a murder mystery night. They're doing a book swap with the teens and the kids. It's like a book exchange. You can come in and bring books and take books. And then she's having the finale party and auction. And all of these little icons on the back are businesses that have donated prizes. And there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars that have donated for the teams buying it. And I think that's it. We. Leaping Louie is also coming in June for the kids program. It's a Western comedy show with rope tricks and whips and juggling. And then Professor Finkelstein, who always comes, it's just very entertaining. So that's what's going on for May and June so far.
Right, nothing.
Yeah, keep it up, Alex.
July is worse. That's all I have. You could just put in the minutes. See the webpage.
Thank you, Keith, for coordinating that. I don't know if you, if we've talked about it before, but scheduling for summer reading is something that is extremely competitive that libraries do months and months and months in advance to try to get performers to be available on the days that they need it. And Keith does just a fabulous job in getting, you know, all of these performers. Well, I started in January. Yeah, yeah, truly. Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, very competitive. But you have a certain number of performers across the state. And you have many, many public libraries that are buying for their, their services and performances. So thank you, Keith, for all the work. I know how hard it is to, to get all that organized as well as all of the other programs.
The results speak for themselves. They really are impressive.
Yes, they do. Yep. Under Old Business, I'm speaking before the city council on May 22. We need someone for June 26. Volunteer. I'll do it.
Okay, and then Jenny and I were talking when we did the council presentation on Monday. I'm confused and she's confused and probably everybody. When we do that, is it under other reports?
Yeah.
And so do you want a name then of who's, you'll, you'll take the name?
I'll just take the name, but they did that so that you could go prior to public comment and any of the other business because you guys, or all, all of these things were like after or you'd have to be smack dab in the middle of public comment. So these normal things, they move those up.
Okay, that's nice. That really is nice.
I'm not in the middle of people screaming.
So I didn't need to send a few.
No, I'll just grab it.
Thank you. What that means is she got signed in like we used to, but she wanted to hear public comment.
Correct. I, I didn't tell Jenny on purpose. I let her just run around and circle. You don't have to sign in because you'll already be on there when the agenda is released.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so everybody's got it. Good. Thanks, Sarah. Look for the agenda. And that, you know, that really does make sense because as a city board, you know, to be mixed in the public comment, I think sometimes is confusing.
Well, I think we do it during budget season, so it just made the most sense. Like during budget season, when you present, she doesn't want, but the boards do. You know, the other ones, they're all under other reports though.
Yeah, so whoever made that change, send the thanks from the board. Okay, Board of Trustees bylaws. Do we have any changes? I found just one minor change. I did, under the Article One purpose, I did check to make sure we were still current with the municipal code and the RCW. So everything is cool in there. Are there any other changes?
I want to comment and I don't know that it matters.
Under guidance for public communication, since we now are also being recorded as opposed to just being able to, well, we, something changed. I mean, we didn't, we're doing recording now and not just the video.
Uh, correct, yeah.
And so I'm just wondering if that needs to be added there? I don't know if it matters or not, that somebody can just listen on. How are they listening? Just through a device or something?
Um, well, they can log on via Zoom because that's what's running right now.
Right.
And then I record it through Zoom and post the video to YouTube.
Okay, so and that was what was not being done.
Yeah, we weren't.
You had to do it in real time before.
Correct.
And now you can do it anytime you want to.
You can always go and look at the video, yeah.
And so I don't know if that needs to be added or not. That's my only question.
I don't, I, I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
I mean, because this is guidance for public communication.
Yeah.
Because basically it's the, the input that we want or the citizen that want to give us. And we did change to say that it would be remotely live at an electronically held meeting. So I don't know.
Well, see, it does say remotely live at electronic held meeting. So it's now, it's not, they can do it anytime, but I don't know if it's worth putting in the actual.
They can still only do public comment.
Well, still, so they can still only do.
Yeah, they can, that's true. Yeah. They can view the video after the fact, but they can only do public comments.
True.
Written one hour before this meeting and then during this meeting and that's it.
Yeah, okay. So that I agree with you then, okay.
I have a question about the, the last sentence in Article Five about citizens may request. It says 10 days prior to a regular meeting. Do we want to revisit that? Make it less than, than 10 days, like five days or seven days or, or what?
You say within an hour? What is the last thing?
It says, a citizen may request an item to be placed, an item be placed on the agenda by submitting a written request to the board president no later than 10 days prior to a regular meeting.
It has to be 10 days.
Yeah, it has to be 10 days because Keith gives it to me on like, say, Monday. And then by Wednesday, I'm sending it to you guys, the, the Wednesday prior. So I don't, I don't, anything less than 10 days wouldn't. You'd be amending the agenda.
I draft the, the, what I send to her, the agenda and all the stats on the first of every month. And then send it to her on the first and then she gets it out the week before. So it has to stay 10 days per consultation.
Cool.
But that's just to add something to the agenda. And then a citizen may comment for three minutes on a non-agenda item. And submit it by writing within an hour, I think.
Yeah, I take them all the way up until nine o'clock, one hour before every board meeting.
Okay, nice. Okay, that's good enough.
Or in real time too.
Well, yeah, or get them, yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I, I think the idea of that paragraph of Article Five is to make sure that the, the public does have an opportunity. So does it read that, that way? Yeah, because that's the, the main thing is the intent is that public may reach us and comment and, and give us their opinion. Okay, anything under Article Six functions? And again, the functions are pretty much taken from a municipal code 2.60. So we can't change them too much.
I thought it looked really good, actually. See.
Yeah, the only thing I found was on the, the next page, Article. But anyway, six, seven. These are not numbers, right? Am I reading that now? Isn't IV four? Oh, nine. Oh, never mind. My pages are wrong. That's right. Under, so I'm going after. It's under, still under meetings. Well, this is under meetings, Article Four. Under Agenda Preparation, I just had a minor correction to see. It says rough draft of copy of agenda and I just thought it should read a rough copy of the agenda. Just to make that clear. That's okay. Is everyone saying that under Agenda Preparation?
Yep, under C.
Yeah.
So you're saying rough and draft are the same, kind of same thing. So you're repeating yourself. Is that why you wanted?
No, I'm just putting an article in front of a rough.
Oh, a rough draft.
A rough draft. Yeah, copy of.
All right, the agenda. Okay.
That's it. And then I didn't see anything else. Did anyone else?
Looks good.
Okay, so with that minor grammatical correction.
You also want to say a rough draft of the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, that she just did this. She did that.
Yeah. All right. Got it. So Denise, are you done making corrections? Well, are we done making corrections? Then can you change it and send me the final and the date it and I will get it to Sarah, put on file pro.
Yeah. We have to approve that or not?
Yes, we do have to approve that.
I want to approve with those small changes.
I second it.
Full in favor?
I do.
The bylaws are definitely amended. And Keith, I will get that to you next week when I'm back from vacation. I mean, it doesn't change the substance of anything, so.
No, I just want to make sure we do.
No, yeah.
Yep.
Definitely.
Please put a date on.
Send files floating around. All right, is there any new business? Being on the agenda, but leaving it open in case we do. Report, Friends of the Library.
Well, I'm supposed to do it, but I could not have kindly agreed to, to do it, so.
Yeah, remember that I did volunteer, filled in for either one of you. I'm, I'm sure you forget, but.
Thank you.
So just kind of both of you.
Yeah, well, and I was at the meeting anyway.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
And that doesn't matter.
Yeah. Um, so basically, oh, well, it was great because we had. The, what, what's?
Interfire chief.
Interfire chief. Was there just to give a presentation on what the fire department does, the number of calls they make, the qualifications of the staff and how they, they really serve as, you know, EMS in this, in this small kind of isolated community. Well, not so small anymore, problem. Anyway, so there were, you know, Brian did questions and answers, so that was good. We talked about all of the events that are coming and Keith had covered most of them in her director's report. The big thing, of course, is the, the book sale coming up on June 2nd and 3rd. And remember, if you're a member of the Friends of the Library, you get to go in early on the, the second. It talked about the SRP kickoff on June 16th, which is really after the book sale, the next big, big event with the Ice Cream Social. And Jeff Evans and the storyteller and lots of other things happening during the, the summer that are in the, the listing of, of events. I, I think that was it. We continue to have new members, which is, which is pretty cool. I'm calling anyone who is a new member. I'm calling them and following up with them. And that was really nice to see two people that I had followed up with just within the past month of come to the meeting. Yeah. So that was, and one of them has already volunteered. She volunteered at May Day.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. You know, when I talked to her, she said that, yeah, I'd be willing to do something. I'm like, well, how about May Day? Because we didn't have enough folks for that. So, yeah. So that is really, really nice to have. Follow up and kind of have that, that personal touch with people. So, and anything else, Keith? No, they are so busy and it's such an active vibrant group now. And I remember days when we'd have two or three show up at a meeting. And there was a good 16 people there and some people couldn't, couldn't attend, you know, for various reasons. And they did approve, they didn't say this at the meeting, so I don't know. But they did approve another $1,200 for adult programs for the rest of the year. Which is fabulous, beyond the, I think it's 15,000 that they're giving me this year. So it's really good.
Oh, and then if you saw on Facebook, the friends did get their roundup from IGA. And that was about 47.
Forty-eight, yeah, forty-seven something.
Yeah.
So next month, on June, they're at Martin Bruni for Roundup, the liquor store. So drink up. And they also found six $100 bill in a book. While Mary Jo was processing donations.
Wow.
And there was no name in the book. It had been in a box in the closet for eons. Six $100 bills. She came up to me, she, in her mouth, and I swear she was pale. She just goes, look what I just found. Six $100 bills in the front of a book that somebody, because she flips through the book to make sure that it don't smell like that or they put them in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they have an extra $600 in. Come out. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, she said, if you looked at the books around, but there are just no way, no, no name.
No way, no.
Yeah, we didn't, we tried to pin it down. I just couldn't make anything match.
Very surprised. So the story is, store your money in books.
It is unfortunate that we couldn't find the, the person.
That if the book has been there for months, I mean, apparently they weren't missing it either.
Yeah, it was probably a clean out of the deceased or moved person. Yeah. We get a lot of those. Well, thank you to whoever it was. A Library Foundation Report, I went to the, the meeting. And I, I am aware, Jenny, that you're the backup, so I will use you in the future. The bylaws now have seven members. I think we had talked about that before. Initially, it was just five, the Board of Trustees. And as we transitioned to a new board, because people go away and we need to have a forum. And it also provides more input and ideas and ways to, to spread the workaround. We have, the, the foundation voted for seven members. But we have lost two members of that. Allison has resigned as president of the board. And Michelle is, Michelle Rivaloso is moving at the end of the month. She got. She got a new position out of town. So there are two open positions. And my understanding is that they are interviewing this month. And that they hope to have a, a full board. At least by July, which is when their elections are for. For new officers. And there's also the Giving Tree in the hallway there, if you would like to give to the foundation. They are funding the sales for the pavilions.
Which come today.
Oh, really, the umbrellas, yeah. Yeah. Do you want to give us an update on that or anything else for the foundation? We've been working with a engineering group to make sure we cut the cement properly. So we've worked through that, they gave their recommendation on how to cut, where to cut. So I'm scheduling, as we speak, another meeting Friday morning with all the involved parties to make sure we place their six umbrella sails. And they're kind of a cantilever like this, there's a picture on the Giving Tree. And so hopefully we'll get them installed next week. So, yeah, my goal was by the kickoff party on the sixteenth of June and it's gonna happen. Good time. The other thing on the foundation is the Giving Tree so far has raised eight hundred and ninety dollars. I think is fabulous. And then at their meeting last week or in April, whenever it was. The staff, Michelle, Nick and Nico gave their WLA reports to them. And they did a very good job, even they got a really good job. And the foundation is real interested in supporting the staff to go to WLA again in two years. Next year it's in Spokane, that's a little far for us to travel and a little too costly. But the next year it's in Kona. So we're gonna ask and I think the foundation will do that again, so.
Do you think it went to Port Townsend this time, wasn't it?
No, we didn't go to Port Townsend, they, they went to Winatchee. To the Washington Library Association Conference, it's a statewide conference. And that's how Dungeons and Dragons is coming out. And also virtual reality, we are asking the Friends to fund a program, it'll be in two weeks, that present a virtual reality program. To the Friends to fund and it's because Nick went to a class thing now, a program. And excited about it, wants to do it and I'm all for it, so. We're gonna be doing, doing that, hopefully. Yeah, it was really cool to see how energized the, the staff was coming back from the conflict.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Jenny. The other thing, the other thing we didn't bring up in the change is there's no longer, not that I want to speak for more than two minutes, but there's no longer that three minute thing. Because we're, we're part of the agenda, so you don't have that three minute. Limit, yeah, the three minute limit, thank you. So I basically, there was so much going on and plus I had, I. He's been asked me to thank the members of, that helped with the ARP tax. Tax event and so that took a little bit of time and then I talked about Dungeons and Dragons, I talked about the library chess meetup. And then I talked about Mike, who's coming to talk about the Mount St. Helens, the Russian. And so I kind of ended. Because at that point, I still, I still just had the three minutes. To check out the newsletter on the library website. So I then I talked a little bit about the art and, and I'll be surprised. Good job.
Allison, do you have any questions for us?
I do not, I do want to say great presentation the other night at council meeting, that was very nice. I, I love that all the board members were involved in speaking and, and all the council members were talking about how much they liked that, so thank you.
Yeah, as I was at, at the break, John mentioned that to me, too, how nice it was to hear from everybody instead of. Just one of us. Though I can say still appreciate hearing from just one of us and what's happening at the library. Anything else, but you go with the order? Okay, our next meeting is June fourteenth. At ten AM. So, okay, thank you all.
Thank you.